All right, we'll call the December meeting to order with a moment of silent meditation, please. All right, can we have a pledge of allegiance to the flag?
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, James, I'm gonna let you take off as per our discussion. We'll have the organizational meeting, so just leave off.
Thank you so much, Mr. Mayor. Item number three on the agenda, this is the organizational meeting. Item number 3A, this is the reading of abstract of votes from the regular election held on November 2nd, 2021 by town clerk. So we'll welcome Town Clerk Jamie Whitley to the lectern.
Good afternoon, Mayor Commissioners. It is my honor to read to you the official votes provided by Dare County Board of Elections. The November 2nd, 2021 municipal election results for the Town of Manio will be read as follows. For the Town of Manio Mayor, Bobby Owens received 214 votes. He ran unopposed. Congratulations, Mayor. You are mayor again. You guys can give him hand claps. For Town of Manio Commissioners, the candidates were as follows. Sherri Butcher-Wickstrom received 186 votes. Eddie Mann received 204 votes. Ruth Jane Stetson received 173 votes. And Christine Walker received 169 votes. Of those elected, we have Sherri Butcher-Wickstrom, Eddie Mann, and Ruth Jane Stetson. You may clap. Mayor, those are the official results.
All right, thank you. Jamie, go ahead.
Okay, I will now proceed with giving you guys your oaths. Mayor, I will start with you if you'll come to the front, please.
I think she's gonna bring you here, sir.
I forgot the Bible.
Sally? All right, come on, Sally. Oh, hey, Miss Sally.
She's my sister-in-law, though.
All right, repeat after me. I state your name.
I, Bobby Owens.
Do solemnly swear
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support
That I will support.
And maintain the Constitution
And maintain the Constitution.
And the laws of the United States
And the laws of the United States.
And the Constitution
And the Constitution.
And the laws of North Carolina
And the laws of North Carolina.
Not inconsistent therewith
Not inconsistent therewith.
And that I will faithfully
And that I will faithfully
Discharge the duties
Discharge the duties.
Of my office
Of my office.
As Mayor
As Mayor.
Of the Town of Manio
Of the Town of Manio.
So help me God.
So help me God.
Congratulations. Oh, I said Bible. Thank you. Next, I will have Mr. Eddie Mann. He's got one Bible.
Here we go. Awesome.
She's right there. Say your left hand, raise your right. Okay, I say your name.
I, Mr. Mayor.
Do solemnly swear
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support
That I will support.
And maintain the Constitution
And maintain the Constitution.
And laws of the United States
And laws of the United States.
And the Constitution
And the Constitution.
And laws of North Carolina
And laws of North Carolina.
Not inconsistent therewith
Not inconsistent therewith.
And that I will faithfully
And that I will faithfully
Discharge the duties
Discharge the duties.
Of my office
Of my office.
As Commissioner
As Commissioner.
Of the Town of Manio
Of the Town of Manio.
So help me God. Congratulations. Next, I would ask that Ms. Sherri Butcher-Wickstrom come up, please. Oh, you said we had the family Bible. Yes, ma'am. Okay. All right, so please raise your right hand and repeat after me. I state your name.
I, Sherri Butcher-Wickstrom.
Do solemnly swear
Do solemnly swear
That I will support
That I will support
And maintain the Constitution
And maintain the Constitution.
And laws of the United States
And laws of the United States.
And the Constitution
And the Constitution.
And laws of North Carolina
And the laws of North Carolina.
Not inconsistent therewith
Not inconsistent therewith.
And that I will faithfully
And I will faithfully
Discharge the duties
Discharge the duties
Of my office
Of my office.
As Commissioner
As Commissioner.
Of the Town of Manio
Of the Town of Manio.
So help me God.
So help me God.
Congratulations. Please raise your right hand. Okay, repeat after me. I state your name.
I, Ruth Stetson.
Do solemnly swear
Do solemnly swear
That I will support
That I will support
And maintain the Constitution
And maintain the Constitution.
And the laws of the United States
And the laws of the United States.
And the Constitution
And the Constitution.
And laws of North Carolina
And laws of North Carolina.
Not inconsistent therewith
Not inconsistent therewith.
And that I will faithfully
And that I will faithfully
Discharge the duties
Discharge the duties
Of my office
Of my office.
As Commissioner
As Commissioner.
Of the Town of Manio
Of the Town of Manio.
So help me God.
So help me God.
Congratulations. Mayor, I will turn it back over to you for the changing of the guard.
Okay, James, go ahead.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Now, as we've had the, the next item on the agenda would be nomination appointment of Mayor Pro Tempore. And of course, this is also the moment as our departing council members have an opportunity to say a few words should they choose to do so, and the, and then the new members will be seated at the dais upon that transfer of power. And it looks like we have one departing member here, of course, Commissioner Richie Burke.
Well, I've seen all my things. I just like to thank the Town of Manio for having me up here for 14 years. It's been a long ride. It's been a tiring ride, but it's been fun. And I'm glad to step aside for the new members to come on board and see what happens for the future of Manio.
And at this point, the town clerk will be, will be placing the new nameplates on the dais. So, sworn in Commissioner Sherri Wickstrom will be occupying the seat at the dais to the right of Commissioner Mann. And Commissioner Stetson will be, will be coming up here next between Mayor Pro Tem Selby and Commissioner Collins.
All right, we have a completion of a new board for the coming year. Congratulations to everybody and Richie. These are, I hate, I still hate to see you leave, but you're gonna be missed, I'll tell you that.
I'm happy to.
Thanks so much. I hope so. Me and your wife get together with flowers anyhow.
Yeah, absolutely. Thank you.
All right, go ahead, James.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. As we move on to the next agenda item, this is item 3C. This is the appointment of the Mayor Pro Tempore. Now, the board has a couple of options here. Option A would be a simple process by which a motion and a second is made to appoint someone as Mayor Pro Tempore or Mayor Pro Tem. In that case, there would be a motion, second, and a vote. If the vote succeeds, that person is then elected or is elected. If it fails, then another name would be selected and go in order. An alternative way of doing it is for the mayor to open up the floor to nominations, and then the members of the board would then put nominations out there. Once nominations finish, then the mayor would close the nomination period, and the votes would be taken in the order in which names are submitted. So, it's certainly up to the will of the board whether to do a simple appointment motion or to do a nomination procedure.
All right, the chair's gonna throw it open to the board to decide this issue, which you want to do. So let me hear some comments from you.
I'd like to make a motion to appoint Betty Selby as the Mayor Pro Tem.
All right, there's a motion.
I'll second. I have, I have some thoughts on it as well.
Well, there's a motion, a second on the floor. We have to dispense with the motion first because of the second. Go ahead, I'm gonna let you, go ahead, Jason.
Well, so we've got a motion and a second, some discussion, obviously. You know, I like the idea of, my personal preference is to rotate it around. I've got every confidence in all six folks up here to fill in should they need to, and I think Betty's done an outstanding job, which she's had to, which she has had to at times. But I like the idea of rotating the responsibility, opportunity, sometimes burden. And so my, my thought is another name, which would be Sherri, and I've seen her, you know, manage the planning and zoning meetings, and I've got every faith in her to do that as well, if she was willing.
All right, I have a few comments on that. While we're along those lines, I'd say let's give the mayor a vote. You know, the mayor has a run for office just like you folks do. I don't have any, they don't have, the people that vote for me have no representation at all. Think about it. I got 200 and some votes, and Mickey Mouse got 25, I don't know who it was. I couldn't compete with Mickey Mouse, of course. But I, I, I think you need to start thinking about it, if not for me, at least for the next mayor. Because the mayor has a run just like everybody else. He runs for two years, not four years. He represents the group that votes for him, and he has no vote whatsoever. So, you need to think about it. All right, we have a motion second on the floor, we will dispense with it. All in favor of the motion, say aye.
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 Let's have a raise of hands, all in favor of the motion, raise your hands. Motion carries. Okay, congratulations, Betty.
Thank you. Thank you, Bill, thank you all.
All right. Okay, James.
Yes, sir. Next up on the agenda, this is item 4D. This is the appointments of Town Clerk, Town Attorney, and Town Manager. This is, it appears to be a pro forma vote, but it is based on the town's ordinances, in which the, these are all, these are all appointed offices, and there are a couple of options available to the board here. Because you have folks who are existing and may be reappointed, you, you may go ahead, if you choose to, to do a motion to just simply reappoint those three positions. However, given that the Town Manager would be departing in a, in just in two weeks and two days, you may choose to table that one until your next meeting in December, at which point you would be likely to be appointing an interim Town Manager. So that's another option available to you, if you'd like to do it that way as well. Either way is certainly in accordance with our existing rules and regulations. So, it's up to the will of the board which way they'd like to go with that.
All right, again, we'll leave it up to the board to discuss it. So I might leave it off.
I would, my opinion would be to table the Town Manager until the December 15th, when you're going to be the Town Manager, until December 15th, anyway. Just my personal opinion.
I second that.
All right, is a motion necessary, James, on that?
Yes, sir. So it sounds like there are made under being two motions here, so if I'm understanding correctly, we have a motion to table the appointment for Town Manager until the December 15th meeting, made by Commissioner Mann, and seconded by Mayor Pro Tem Selby.
All right, we have a motion before us to delay the Town Manager. All in favor of the motion?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. All right, we will move on with that one.
Yes, sir. So the next up would be the potential reappointment, the proposed reappointment of Jamie Whitley as Town Clerk and Ben Gallup as Town Attorney. They're sitting in those offices right now and are eligible for reappointment.
I move to appoint Jamie Whitley as Town Clerk, Ben Gallup as Town Attorney, and I move to table the appointment for the Town of Manio until the December meeting.
All right, there's a second to the motion.
I'll second.
All right, motion second, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Ayes have it. Motion carries. All right, James.
Thank you, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Item number four on the agenda, this is the actual adoption of the agenda. Now that the organizational meeting is complete, it's time for the newly, newly seated board to adopt an agenda. In this particular item, it does require action. Now, as, as an explainer, the mayor sets the proposed agenda, is what's customary here in the Town of Manio, and then the board either approves the agenda as presented or may choose to amend it. The mayor has actually requested a, an amendment to the agenda in which case it would be the removal of item number 11A from the agenda. And that item 11A, it's a closed session item, which was to, to talk about real estate with regard to Magnolia Lane. So, in this particular case, the mayor, the agenda he's proposing is to be the agenda that was printed minus item number 11A.
All right, you heard from the Town Manager, what's feeling is the board.
I move to adopt the agenda minus item 11.
All right, there's a second.
Second.
All right, a motion and second to remove the item, whatever it is, from closed agenda, closed meeting. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Ayes have it. Okay, we'll move on with the consent agenda with the reduction of the other amendment we just passed on. Go ahead, James.
Thank you, sir. Item number 5A, this is, or this is a consent agenda. 5A would be the minutes from the regular meeting on November 3rd. 5B would be the minutes for the recess workshop on November 17th. And item 5C, this would be the proposed schedule for the Board of Commissioners' meetings in 2022. The 2022 meeting schedule does follow the current format of the first Wednesday at 6:30 in each month for the regular session, and then the, I'm sorry, did I say first Wednesday? Okay, first Wednesday for the regular meeting, and then the third Wednesday for, at 5:00 for the recessed workshop. And that was the proposed meeting schedule, and that would be the consent agenda.
I'll move to approve the consent agenda as presented.
Second.
All right, it's a motion and second that we move to the agenda. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Ayes have it. Motion carries.
All right. Thank you, sir. Item number six on the agenda, this is under proclamations, and this is, this is a really important proclamation that was, that was determined by, by the Board of Commissioners at a prior meeting. And so, on behalf of the mayor, I would like to, to read it. And this proclamation is for Linda Midget Day. Whereas Linda Midget has been a dedicated servant to residents, citizens, and visitors of the Town of Manio and Dare County. And whereas Linda provided leadership and organization to many of the town's special events, like July 4th, the lighting of the Christmas tree, the Christmas parade, and especially Dare Day. Whereas the important work of Linda cannot be quantified in the economic benefit to the town or in the compassion experienced by so many served, but can only be measured by the tremendous gratitude we have for Linda's exceptional and selfless service. And whereas Linda Midget truly exemplified the noble endeavor to leave a place better than when she found it, and in doing so inspires all of us to do the same. And whereas the Board of Commissioners and residents of the Town of Manio would like to recognize and thank Linda for her legacy of caring and for the imprint she left upon our community. Now therefore, on behalf of Bobby Owens, Mayor of the Town of Manio, in recognition of the outstanding contributions of Linda Midget, do gladly hereby proclaim the sixth day of December, 2021, Linda Midget Day in the Town of Manio, and encourage all citizens to remember, remember Linda for her friendship and honor her for her dedicated service to our community. Mr. Mayor, I believe we do have some members of Ms. Linda's family, Allison and Nikki, I believe, are here, and we have a framed proclamation, if you'll allow us to present it to them.
Yeah, I'd like to ask, since he made the motion and he was involved
Oh, yes.
I'd like to ask Darrell to be a part of this. Of course, my name is signed to as mayor, but this was Darrell's motion, he got it started, and I'd like to ask Darrell to represent the town. Thank you so much. Linda was a jewel. She'd be shining right now at Christmas time, with all of her stuff, all her Lefel and flowers and everything, and she lit up the town when she got involved, and you knew she was there when she left, too.
All right.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. We'll be going to the next agenda item. These, this is item seven, it's presentations and reports. These items are for information. And we'll start with a, we'll have, we do have some items on the screen, and that would be the presentations would start with Exeter Street Parking, and we'll ask our IT Director to move us on to the next slide. So as we look at, at slide number two here, this is a, this is a segment of Exeter Street. As you see on the picture, on the photo on the left-hand side, you'll see the Dare County Department of Health and Human Services, and this facility has recently been expanded with a building in the center of it. In fact, in the picture there, you can actually see a few construction vehicles still on the left-hand side, as well as some regular parking. Now, the reason this is coming to the board tonight as background is, first of all, there was a request for a no parking zone in this area. And we had a request from the, the adjacent management company over there at Bay Tree, and they, they noted that they had, their email indicated they had observed some safety issues going on with Exeter Street. The problem, quoting from the email here, "The problem is parking is allowed on the right side of the street and causing elderly tenants to have to merge over in the middle lane. There's not enough room to do this safely, and I had to merge over this morning, and a school bus was coming from the opposite direction, and I wasn't comfortable, and I drive a mid-sized car. Please consider putting no parking signs on this whole street for safety reasons. Thank you for your assistance." Now, of course, no parking zones are part of the town's code of ordinances, and so the Public Works Department just can't go up and, you know, slap up speed limit signs or no parking signs or things like that, there's a process. And that process would be to modify the code of ordinances should the board decide to do so. So, one of the things we always do is bring it to the board first before just dropping into ordinance in your lap. So, this photo here shows cars parking on the left-hand side there, adjacent to the Dare County building. You can see a car traveling in the opposite direction, heading over toward Bowser Town Road. Now, we have noticed there is a, been a recent increase in street parking here, and that happened initially because of the construction there at the Dare County facility. A part of the parking lot had been closed as part of a lay-down yard for that facility, but also now as parking lots have opened up, there is sometimes overflow parking on the street. The measurements of the street had, between asphalt and the concrete pan of the gutter, curb and gutter there, gets you around 29 to 30 feet for two lanes of traffic and one lane of parking. So, some of the key issues the board would consider are traffic flow. So, potential conflicts or negative outcomes would be as described by the requesting party in terms of potential conflicts for people turning in and out of the developments there and potential conflicts with people coming in both directions with large vehicles. On the flip side, potential calming, I know there have been some planning, some planning exercises where having narrower lanes and on-street parking often would calm traffic in areas, especially if those areas had previously had high rates of speed. So, there are definitely potential pros and cons to be considered here, and we always want to respond to any kind of concern expressed. Another issue, of course, is traffic, traffic, parking availability. There, we have seen, as this building has expanded, there may be, maybe needs for parking beyond what's, what's already there. And there are other issues. Is this a long-term versus short-term issue? For example, it first came to light when the construction happened, and construction is almost done. When I was out there, most of the cars parked in the street were construction vehicles, but not all. Some were patrons of those facilities there, so therefore not part of the construction. Also, would a consideration be for the entire street? We didn't observe any parking issues as you go farther down toward Bowser Town, say down by the dialysis center or one of those areas. So, the question would be, would it be the entire street, just a segment in the developed area, et cetera? So, those are some of the issues to consider. So the policy question becomes, should the code of ordinances be amended to make Exeter Street a no parking zone? Now, that's not something that needs to be done in a motion or second, a motion or vote tonight, because if the board wanted us to proceed with it, we would simply direct staff to develop an ordinance for your future consideration. However, if the board doesn't want to take it up, we simply move on to the next agenda item and, and go from there.
All right, here we go again. I'm gonna leave the discussion up to the board, what would the board like to do between the two issues. I will say this, any of yous ridden by there, it is a problem. When the cars are parked on the side of the road now, and another car's coming from one way, and you're in the middle, and it's really hard to pass, you have to negotiate your movements passing each other. It is a bad situation due to the expansion of the county buildings, and which is more traffic. So, I'm just gonna add that in, but y'all decide what you want.
May I hear? Yes, I just wanted to say that when I was out and about and doing some door-knocking, this issue came up over and over again, and people are very concerned about it. So I think it certainly would be of value to have the staff look at this, just because there's so many people who brought it up. It was on the, on my radar screen.
All right, anyone else?
Was this a problem prior to the construction? I mean, because I think people are parking there because of the construction going on. So, is that, was it congested like this? I don't remember, prior to this construction.
They're really parking there permanently, Betty, because they, they're using that side entrance, going in there and parking their cars there and going inside, doing their business. You know, social services there, and then there's another, I think it's health services, I'm not sure.
Yeah, health departments.
There's two different departments there, and people park their cars and go in and do their business, come out, so, I mean, I, I don't really care if it's up the aisle, whatever you decide. Now, I think Cheryl's got a good suggestion, that we just tell, that the staff come up with something, bring it back to us, and see, let us look at it. Either way.
I would like to hear from the Town Planner and the Police Department on this one, just for emergency vehicle sake, what their suggestions are, and then maybe there's certain areas where those side streets turn out, if that should be designated no parking, and maybe there's suitable parking areas in other places on the street, or what, what their suggestions are, maybe the Police Department and the Town Planner can team up on that.
Well, Eddie, you're kind of concurred with Cheryl, you're bringing up your own suggestion that you table and tell the police, our police department, and our plan, more look into it?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
Yeah. I, um...
Yeah, I echo what all three of you said. I mean, it's, is it a short-term or long-term issue, you know, based on construction? You hate to jump into any kind of action, and we've seen with the long-term effects of sometimes doing things like calming over by the park there, which, you know, the bump outs were to slow down, and now people hate the bump outs. So, yeah, but it's certainly worth looking into and seeing more with staff, like Eddie said, so.
Let me ask you this, James, would we have to have a motion to get, just go ahead, as you're hearing from the majority of the board, I think? And just go ahead, and y'all take care of it and bring it back to the board?
Yes, sir, that's perfect, and we really appreciate that kind of feedback and guidance, and it's still, it's still going to be the board's decision after we give it some, give it some assessment, including the relevant department, so it'll come back to the board at a future meeting.
All right, is that a feeling of the board?
Okay. Thank you, sir, appreciate it. Okay, next up, we have, we go to the next slide, we're talking about the Memorial Recognition Program, and this is something apparently was discussed by a prior board some years back, the possibility of, say, sponsoring, doing a memorial plaque on, say, a bench or something like that. But it has, it has come up more recently. We, for example, had, we'd had a request to dedicate a bench in the memory of a loved one. In this particular case, it was a group of people who wanted to honor the son of a person who lives on Roanoke Island, loved Manio, and especially loved being down by the waterfront, and they wanted to dedicate a bench in memory. Now, they knew, they know that there was, these programs have existed in other places, so that's why they approached us or the town. I will also note as background, we do have an increased need for site furnishings, and it's both in our formal parks, like the Town Common, the Davis Lot, and of course, as well as other areas, other, other parts of the town-owned properties around the town. In fact, the bench you see on the screen there is one that's actually just up the corner here, just a little, just a little place for folks to sit as they're walking down Budley Street on their way, on their way to the east. Now, there are some issues, though, to be considered if the board wants to consider a memorial recognition program. So, for example, eligibility criteria for dedication. Some jurisdictions, they don't have any eligibility criteria, it can be anybody who just wants to be there, wants to recognize a loved one. Some other places, you have to say, well, what your tie is, are you a visitor, are you a resident, or whatever. Also, terms and conditions. Are they specifically for just, you know, you have to pay, do they pay the full cost of the bench? Is there a set level for sponsorship? And given that we've got different types of benches and site furnishings and things like that, you know, there can be some variability there. That also leads to the next item, another issue is coordination with existing plans. So typically, we want a donation to be in conjunction with the existing plan. We don't want just benches bringing up all around town that don't match to either master plans, park plans, or things that have been approved by this body. So just, you know, willy-nilly planting of trees or benches doesn't make sense. And that leads to the next item. What's the type of dedication? Because some places only do a bench memorial with a plaque, it's a very simple program. But here, it could be a bench, it could be tables. In the Davis Lot, we're going to do some picnic tables in addition to benches, and those tables be ADA accessible, you know, so there's different, there are different levels of things that could be site furnishings, but also trees, landscape elements, trellis or arbor, there are different things that could be done, and by expanding it, you do have more potential for those kind of donations or memorials. And of course, also important is the review entity. Given that we're talking about putting someone's name here and having it memorialized here in the town, it may, would be important to have a review entity, whether that's the Board of Commissioners has the final word on that or whatever, that certainly, certainly makes sense. I don't think we'll have a flood of applications, but there are enough, enough interest in it that certainly we want to make sure to bring this to your attention. So we're not looking for a motion, but we're trying to get some feedback. Since years ago, a prior board had not been interested in doing this, apparently there was some vigorous debate about it, wanted to see if this board had an interest in moving forward this, and if so, you know, we could, the staff could develop an application for this board to review and consider a program such as this if there was any interest on the part of the board. So we're simply looking for feedback from the board, just like we did with the last item.
All right, you've heard from the town manager, what's the feeling to the board? Comments?
I think it's a good idea. There's a lot of good people in Town of Manio, and needs to be remembered as you take a break from a nice brisk walk or whatever you do in town.
I agree, I think it's a great idea to memorialize somebody. I guess with the application review, maybe limited to individuals, and I could see where somebody could use it as an advertising platform if they wanted to, so maybe limited to individuals in the application process.
All right, James, this sounds to me like everybody's kind of for it, you know, would be for it, and I think it'd be appropriate for you and your staff to come up with a program. I mean, we're just talking about a program tonight, but you'd have to come up with a program, and memorials, et cetera, et cetera, et cetera, and I don't think this board is capable of doing it. It is capable of doing it, but it shouldn't do it. So we need some standards and guidelines for everything involved, so I would suggest, if it's all right with the board, that you and your staff come up with something, with a proposal and bring it back to this board, let us look at it. Is that all right with everybody? Do you have any other suggestions? Go ahead.
Just one other comment, I mean, things like, you know, it's not in perpetuity, so for how many years would this be, you know, would the memorial be on a bench or an arbor or a trellis? Those kinds of things I think need to be answered, but I mean, I think it's a wonderful idea, a beautiful idea, but we do have to have some guidelines on it.
Well, you could incorporate, James, in your proposals.
Can I also say, I think there's an opportunity here for something that I've seen in other cities, the smart city angle as we move forward was probably what will be a town app one day. The Corolla has a town app, a few other places do nearby. There's something, some kind of a living history that we could grow through a QR code or some kind of interactive experience, where it doesn't just become a person's name immortalized, it becomes maybe a well-curated artistic moment of their life and the story that played out in the Town of Manio. So I think we could really maybe even have a moment to stand out here if we work on this smartly, so.
Excellent idea. Well, James, you're here, by, you're getting the feeling of the board, so I would suggest, if it's all right with the board, that we go ahead with that, and you take and run with it and bring it back to us.
Thank you, sir, and thank you, members of the board. If it's all right with you, Mr. Mayor, would you like me to move to public comment?
Yep.
All right. Item number eight on the agenda, this is for information, this is the public comment period. Members of the public are invited to address the Board of Commissioners on any topic. Public comment is not intended to require the board to answer any impromptu questions or to take any action on items brought up during this period. Speakers will address all the comments to the board as a whole and not one individual. Discussions between speakers and members of the audience will not be allowed. Time limits are three minutes per person or five minutes per group. Please come forward to the lectern and identify yourself so your statements can be recorded.
All right, we'll now open it up for public comment period. Someone, anybody want to say something? This is unusual. Anyone like to say anything? All right, we'll ask one more time, would anybody like to comment or make any proposals to the public comment period? Okay, James, we'll.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Public comment period.
All right, thank you, sir. Next up on the agenda, this is new business, and item number nine A, this is for action. This is the appointment of a Planning and Zoning Board Chair. In this particular case, Chair Wickstrom has moved to, from the appointed body to election to the Board of Commissioners here, and sits beside you, beside you on the dais. Now, in this particular case, there are, there are four remaining members of the Planning and Zoning Board, and they include Jamie Daniels, Hal Goodman, Nicole Northrup, and Field Scarborough. In this particular case, just like for the appointment of Mayor Pro Tempore, there, you can take a couple approaches. One, you could do just a simple appointment, you know, a motion and a second, and then act on that, on that motion, or if you choose to open the floor to nominations, collect nominations until there are none, close it, and then vote one by one from there. And again, that's up to the will of the board, whether, which, which method you'd like to use.
Have we advertised for, that there's going to be openings on the planning board? Have we advertised?
Yes, sir, and for, and it's not just for Planning and Zoning Board, we have multiple vacancies. I know we had a, the public may have seen the presentation done last meeting. We've done news, we've done newspaper, a newspaper ad, we've done online postings on our website, social media, posting in the kiosk, as well as other mechanisms, so we're trying to use one of those, all of the above strategies to get it out there. Also, of course, though, members of the public who are interested may self-dominate for Board of Commission, and of course, members of the Board of Commissioners know their constituents so well, and certainly those referrals are most welcome.
All right, comments from the board?
I would like to make a motion to nominate Nicole Northrup as Chair of the Planning Board. I think she, I mean, anybody on the Planning Board, it's such a great group, so smart, everybody, very dedicated group. Nicole is a person who is, just digs in real deep and brings a lot of good information to the table. I would like to nominate.
All right, there's a motion on the table for Nicole Northrup to be the new Planning Board Chair. Is there a second to the motion?
I'll second.
All right, there's been a motion and seconded that Nicole Northrup be appointed as Chair to the Planning Board. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
opposed? Nicole, congratulations.
Is she here? She was here.
She's not even here.
Well, she was here.
She'll be a good one, I'll tell you that. She's dedicated, she's loyal to Manio and what's going on. I know for a fact, I will say that. Okay, Nicole was the new chair.
Great, thank you, sir. We'll move on to item number nine B on the agenda, this is called Pay Plan Amendments. This particular item was generated at a prior board meeting, where the request was made to look at the pay plan, especially as we're looking at our Public Works Department, and also, though, as we looked at this, we also have comparable positions in water and sewer, so keeping positions level or that pay equity is so important. So had some wonderful assistance in this particular endeavor. Hats off to Town Clerk Jimmy Whitley, who was gathering a lot of local information, which we then cross, which I, we cross-checked with the League of Municipalities database, and of course, our Public Works Director Frankie Woodley is, has been here as well. So in this case, though, we did find, as the Commissioner had suggested at the prior meeting, we have actually seen a gap between what the Town of Manio, those workers were making versus some of the nearby municipalities. So following the, following the process here and the assessment, the action was to try and level that playing field, both in terms of allowing us to try and attract some workers, because we've had problems attracting workers in those departments, but also to retain our existing ones, because what we found in those departments and another one, we'd been losing some people, and their exit indicated they were going for higher pay elsewhere. So this could help both with recruitment and retention. So the recommendation based on the data was to increase those positions in those departments by two pay grades, and that was the, that was the proposal before the board.
Okay. Jason, this was your baby in the beginning, two or three meetings ago, would you like any comments?
I can't remember if I've read it already, but, you know, I think if we want to continue to have the best, we got to, we got to keep up with everybody and pay them, so I'd move to approve an increase in two pay grades for staff in Public Works Department and Water and Sewer Department, be reflected on in the pay plan.
All right, hold off on your second, if you would please. Darrell, you've got something you want to say? Oh, you're going to second? I was giving you your chance, Darrell. All right, there's been a motion and a second on the floor to vote in favor of the pay plan presented by the town manager.
I'd just like to say real quick.
Any comments?
I have a comment, but if you don't mind. I think one of the most important things we can do for our town staff is to invest back in them, and I appreciate the job that they all do, and they deserve much more, but I'm happy to vote for them to get a raise.
All right, any other comments? All right, there's a motion on the floor, all in favor of the motion, say aye. Hey, the ayes have it, the motion cares. Frankie, you've got a little more money.
Thank you so much, thank you so much, Mr. Mayor, and members of the Board of Commissioners. Next up on the agenda, this is item nine C, this is the Davis Lot Construction Contract. When we first put this out to bid, I was hoping we'd be in the scenario as we had with our Town Common Phase One, in which we came in under budget. Unfortunately, what we're hearing from the contractors is that the costs are going up, but in a number of different areas, and in this particular case, you may see that I wasn't actually proposing this for a motion, because I have not been able to bring a contract to you for this construction, because this came in so far over budget. We do have some options if you choose to make a motion, but let me just talk to the issues here. So this is for the Davis Lot, the plan that's been, you know, the plan has been approved, walkways and benches and landscaping, correction of grading and those types of issues. And it came in, we, the engineer for this is Almaral Associates. They don't recommend awarding this contract at this rate either, and you may have seen from my staff report, they don't recommend awarding it. However, they did suggest that we, we give the engineer an opportunity to negotiate with the apparent low bidder, in order to find out, you know, what's driving the costs, is it the cost of any of the pavers, is it caught labor, so work with the contract, but we'd have to be with the apparent low bidder to be in conformance with procurement rules. In that case, though, if they, we didn't want to go negotiate with a low bidder and give them the false hope that this board would still consider it, because we don't believe that negotiating will still bring it down to the budget, it's too far above the budget. So we could just, if the board wants to postpone the project, we could just reject all, reject all the bids, but, you know, in the staff report, you saw, we could potentially rebid. The engineer didn't think rebidding now would make a difference, we only had two contractors bid, it was an informal bid, and there's no reason to believe they would change significantly. We could rebid it after obtaining grant funding, so, for example, the Outer Banks Visitors Bureau, their next TIG grant program, that window opens up in September, so try and get some more money for this project. An alternative is rebid it next fiscal year and perhaps take some, increasing the budget, that would be an alternative. And then, though, if we allow negotiating with a apparent low bidder to reduce the costs, then we can bring that information back to the board, and if any tapping of fund balance or budget amendments needed, you would have that information too before you, before you would ever approve a contract. So that was the recommended approach, but again, we want to listen to the will of the board before we ever approach a contractor, so that's why I'm offering those alternatives to the board.
Just to recap, what was the proposed budget and what was the low bidder's?
Yeah, we're, let's see, the, I'm looking, I'm looking at the staff report here, here's the, the engineer's estimate here comes in at 66,750, and our low bid is 131,500. So you understand my concern?
Yeah.
But we do have, we do, we do want to push the project forward if that's the will of the board, that's why we're trying to suggest that other alternative, if you want to push it forward, but we also understand if you don't want to.
Money-wise, as far as our budget and our finances and everything, where do we stand? Would we be safe, in your opinion, or what?
Yes, sir, I believe that as, after we get the actual number, that we should have enough, either in the existing budget where we can do a budget transfer or amendment, but we also should have, now that the audit, the audit's been done, completed, passed with flying colors, we can see what the fund balance is, if we need to tap a little bit of that, then, but I also, what I didn't want to do is put our finance director on the spot until we get the actual number, the actual target. But I believe we could make up the difference, we just, right now, going to 100, doubling what the estimate was just didn't seem prudent.
Well, everybody knows the cost has gone out of sky high, because I know two people building two houses right now, and the price has tripled in no time. But I was going to ask you this, I don't know, you would know, if we would talk about dipping in the balance this year and taking a piece of the fund balance next year, whatever you're saying, could we take both of them and combine them, and would that lose, lower it any? You know what I'm saying?
Yes, sir, and actually, I don't think, I, I'm going to get, come to a positive answer here. I don't think we can touch next year's fund balance, because we can't appropriate for a future board, but I do believe between our current budget and fund balance that we have left, once we get that number, I am very hopeful that we can, we'll have enough money that can be appropriated without hitting our, hitting our minimum fund balance level of 75%.
That's what I was saying. That's all I'll say.
Yes, sir.
All right. What's the feeling to the board? Discussion?
So I know from my limited construction expertise, if you call it that, that I know that pavers have doubled in the past year. So I would think it would be appropriate. To me, that's not that crazy, it has doubled in the past year. But it's a lot of money. So I would certainly look at maybe renegotiating with a low bidder, but also inquiry about alternative materials, maybe. Not subpar materials, but just alternative materials and what, what could be put there to maybe bring the cost down. But I do know from my own background, like a paper that I used to buy for six fifty is now twelve fifty. So it's a lot of money in pavers.
Yeah. My first reaction is a similar thought, you know, and, and with construction prices skyrocketing, you know, all the talks around lumber's, you know, quadrupled, but it, it's construction materials. So I'd like to know more of where that comes from, because it's been like, you know, as lumber's gone down, other stuff has gone up. And so is it just a matter of switching gears, personal preference, and there's, you know, it's all in the pavers they were using, and we can do something else and shave it down, and it's not, that's an inferior product? So, yeah, I'd like a little more information before we go. Is, it, I feel like we probably have the money for it, like you said, and it, it looks like a lot of money compared to itself, because it's doubled. But if we've got it, then it's not too much for the town. I don't know that it is.
You got, you got one problem, and it's not really a problem, but way the, I guess you'd say the law was written as far as the Davis Lot's concerned, it was beef for the preservation of the Elizabeth II that you could see through it. The stuff could only be a certain height that you could still see the Elizabeth II's, which is written in the original contract, and also that it cannot be any concrete or asphalt. I'm right, James, aren't I?
Yes, sir.
It can't be any concrete or asphalt put on the property, so it would, either had to be bare or brick. And unless y'all can come up with another source of rev, I mean, what material that would go there, but that's the only material that can go on that lot by law. It was real strict when they wrote the bill, and it's locked in. So, and there's nothing wrong with it. I can see where they're coming from, because they wanted to preserve the property.
Mr. Mayor, it looks like we've had some feedback from the board, if there's, if there's general consensus.
Well, I'm hearing, I think, relook at it and see what you can do with it, or what, who am I hearing?
I think we need to maybe postpone, the Davis Lot will be there five or six years from now, and maybe the prices of materials will go down maybe two, three years from now, and then we can move forward and improve it.
I'll be honest, I'm kind of torn, because I, I, I keep thinking material's going to go down any day now, too, and I've been waiting on it for, since COVID started, and it hasn't happened yet. It's kind of flat, though, but nothing's gone down. So I know it's a lot of money, it's another sixty thousand dollars. If we hold off, you know, what's the value of that Davis Lot if we upgrade it? It might be worth more than, you know, the extra sixty thousand. So I don't want to wait on doing it, but I certainly would like to negotiate some costs there, if that's possible.
Well, would you put that in the form of a motion?
Yes. I'd like to make a motion, town staff renegotiate with the engineer in front, is that right, James?
The engineer would negotiate with the apparent low bidder to reduce the costs and then bring it back to the board.
Yeah, I'd like to make that motion.
All right. Is there a second?
Yeah. I don't think it's to say that we have to make an action on what they bring back, you know, maybe they've got gold-trimmed bricks that they're bringing out here, and we take that off, and they come in at sixty thousand, so.
I'm sorry, I had to say that, Jason, but it was.
Well, I mean, they've done the estimate, they've got the information, so let's get back with them and figure out what they've got, instead of just punting on it now, even if we're punting on it in a month. So I second that, is what I'm trying to say.
All right. There's a motion, a second on the board, we look at it and talk to Almaral Associates and leave it up to you, James, and bring it back to the board. Maybe they can find some gold-plated bricks somewhere.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. And I, do you want to call, to put it to a vote? We've got, I guess, was the motion made by Commissioner Mann and the second by Commissioner Borland? Did I catch that?
Yep.
And this motion is just to renegotiate.
It's not to take any action, just to negotiate.
No, no action. All right. You've got a motion and a second on the floor. All in favor of the motion, say aye. Opposed? Ayes have it. Motion carries. James, you'll have to go with it.
Thank you, sir. Next up on the agenda, this is item number ten. This is for information. This is under Mayor and Commissioner comments.
I don't have any comments, except Merry Christmas, I hope everybody has a very, very good one and a healthy one, and everybody's well. And this new virus is not as serious as we all think it is. I'm afraid it is. Eddie?
I have nothing, Mayor.
Ruth Jane? I'm going to have to quit saying Ruth Jane. Ruth?
That's all right. I just want to thank everybody for those that voted for me and those that I get to serve. I'm really excited to just connecting, to, excited to connect with our community at large. There's a lot of people I realized that I didn't know. This place is so small, but so large at the same time. It's ever-growing, and I'm excited to learn from a lot of the interesting people I've realized live here in the last year. So I'm just excited to be a part of this board and to work with all of you guys as well, so.
All right. Cheryl?
I would like to just repeat really what Ruth said, and that is, I am so delighted to be here as well. It has been an incredible journey knocking on so many doors and getting to know people. And what a mix of folks we have in town. Some people who've lived here all their lives, and some who have, or many who have come because this place is so special, and it draws, it draws people. So I am very pleased to be elected to this position, and I did love working as Chair for the Planning Board. It was a delightful experience as well. But anyway, I thank everyone, and I feel like I know all of you because I have been able to interact with you from working on the Planning Board. So this is, this is a wonderful new step for me. We'll get to spend more time together.
All right. Jason?
Yeah, well, welcome to the new guys here. Welcome to the party. And then, and then a bunch of thanks, thanks to Richie and Christine, you know, stepping out. And obviously, it's a pleasure being up here with you guys and look forward to working with you. And then, thanks in advance to Frankie and everybody as we enter Special Events Committee's Super Bowl and, and having to set up and clean up after everything. It's a fun time of year, but it takes work, so, thank you.
Eddie?
Yeah, I'd like to thank, I know Christine's not here, but Christine and Richie for their service to the town, dedicating their town, and I'd like to thank their families for letting them do that. And also congratulate the new board members, and I look forward to hearing their perspective on issues, and can't wait to hear what you'll break to the table. I'm excited to work with you. And to the Public Works staff, thank you. You're going to be very busy. I appreciate everything y'all do.
Daryl?
I'd like Richie and Christine for their service to Towne Mania. We'll miss you. I'd like to welcome the new board members, and I hope you got something very special for the first annual end of Midget's Day, pretty, coming up pretty soon.
That it? All right. We'll move on. James?
Yes, sir. So next up, next up on the agenda, item number eleven has been modified. So item number eleven A has, has been deleted from the agenda. In this particular case, if the board chooses to move into closed session, they would need to make a motion and a second. The, the motion, the revised motion would go something like a motion to enter into closed session in accordance with North Carolina General Statute 143-318-11A3 to consult with an attorney employed or retained by the public body in order to preserve the attorney-client privilege between the attorney and the public body, which privilege is hereby acknowledged, and North Carolina General Statute 143-318-11A6 to consider the qualifications, competence, performance, character, fitness, conditions of appointment, or conditions of initial employment of, of an individual public officer employee or prospective public officer employee.
All right. We have a need to go into closed session.
I'll make the motion to enter closed session for North Carolina General Statute 143-318-11A3 to consult with an attorney employed or retained by the public body to preserve attorney-client privilege, and also for North Carolina General Statute 143-318-11A6 to consider all competence, competence, performance, character, fitness, and conditions of appointment, or conditions of initial employment of an individual officer or employment of prospective public officer employee. That's a long one.
All right. Is there a second?
A second.
Motion second, we go into closed session. All in favor, say aye. Nay? The ayes have it. We're now in closed session. This is for the public. As rule, we go into the ante room and come out of the session and report what, what transpired, what went on, but I can assure you this, after this is done, we come out of closed session, we will adjourn the meeting. So if you want to stay to see what happened during the closed session, it's up to you, but if you've got better things to do, which I hope you have, you can stay and, or go. I just would like y'all to know that, because you might not want to sit here very long. Okay, we're in closed session. We're. Oh, of course. I guess you made a motion, and we had a second, we're out of closed session, ante has up, good. So now we're in closed session, now we're back into open session. Any comments? Anybody?
Make a motion to adjourn?
All right. We'll make a motion, is there a second?
I'm sorry, make a motion to recess.
Motion second, we adjourn, and we'll go into workshop fifteen?
Yes, sir.
At five o'clock. All right. We're now standing adjourned.